Come on it, Patrick. Here we go. It's six thirty. Let's call the April eighteenth Planning and Zoning Commission to order. We'll start with a roll call. Brooks? Mike? Brian? Megan? Melissa? Rob? We have a quorum. I would like to welcome Megan to the Planning and Zoning. This is her first meeting. I have set aside fifteen minutes to talk about yourself if you'd like.
No, that would be all very boring.
All right, then.
While we're a new group, did anyone want to switch seats or sit somewhere else? Or are we good where we are?
Hey, man, it's like, we're midwestern. We find our seat, we stay.
Do we have an annual meeting where we choose the...
Yeah, that's not yet.
When is that?
Two meetings from now. When I'm not here. All right, item number three, the approval of the agenda.
I have one item to add at the end. It's a discussion item regarding the difference between a townhouse and a multifamily dwelling.
So, motion and a second with that addition, is that correct? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number four is the consent calendar. Looks like we have three plats to take care of. Would entertain a motion?
I'll make motion to approve.
Motion and second to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number five, approval of minutes of the April fourth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting. I know we missed you. It took twenty minutes to approve them because nobody did it.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the minutes of the April fourth meeting. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, public comments. This is a time where if you would wish to address the commission, you may do so now. If you are here for a agenda item, you will have time to speak at that as well if you would like. Otherwise, I would welcome anybody to come up. Hearing none. Item number seven, conditional use application for two oh four East Holly Boulevard. Patrick?
So, this business, a couple of years ago, was issued a conditional use permit for alcohol sales. That's required in the general business district, also required both by the city municipal code, but now the planning and zoning code, and we're working through an amendment to that effect, but it's been required in the city code. They also need a conditional use permit for video lottery machines. This is an existing business, and we're just trying to bring them into compliance. There is a public comment from a neighbor in front of you. It's the longer of the two.
So, if you remember correctly, we did, oh, gosh, eight, nine, ten, how many of these last meeting? Essentially, the city council changed the ordinance for video lottery. And so, we are bringing them into compliance because the city basically changed the rules on them. So, um, hold on just a second. Anybody up here have anything? If you... On what? How about now? Really? Making myself deaf up here? Okay. Anybody have any thoughts on this? No?
I have a question.
Sure.
So, does a conditional use permit follow the property or the owner?
This one follows the property. If it's a home occupation, it follows the owner, but this one is the property.
Okay, because the owner of this particular business or this property changed recently? Or was going to change?
Correct.
But the...
Was going to, but has not, yes.
It hasn't yet?
No.
But just to be clear, the conditional use that's already on the property continues even if there's a new owner, correct?
Correct.
All right.
Would that also be if the use continues? Is there a provision like that also?
Correct. If they would discontinue for a year, the conditional use permit would die. Then they have to reapply.
Is anybody here in the audience to speak to this particular one? No? Okay.
With this, um, this comment that we had here from a resident, they're concerned with smoking to the back of the property and along the sides. Is there any ordinance for anything behind a building or anything that prohibits that?
We have noise ordinances in place, which you certainly can call the police and have them take care of it.
Does it know what the rules were with smoking around buildings and designated areas or anything like that?
Once you're outside? No.
We can put conditions on a conditional use. Does the current one have any conditions on it that we know of?
The alcohol permit does not. The issue with conditional use permits, in this case, there are many. It's an existing business. You would be placing the conditions on this permit, and there would be another one that exists. So, you could have potentially a conflicting situation where one allows something and one does not. And this one would be applied to video lottery machines themselves and not the business itself.
So, just a couple of comments. When the applicant came in for the alcohol permit, I went, this was about a year ago, and I went back and listened to that recording of that meeting. And the committee asked the applicant what their hours of operation were. And the intent of that question was because it was against residential. At that time, the applicant indicated, don't quote me on this, but it was like between like ten and eleven in the morning until nine or ten at night. The applicant also indicated there would only be a front door. So, I know, I think it was a last meeting, we, maybe it was two meetings ago, we had a similar situation for a alcohol dessert wine.
Okay.
At an establishment that was also against residential. And in that situation, we did restrict them from serving in their backyard, which was against residential. So, I did ask Patrick about this a couple of days ago. If something that is spoken verbally at the meeting is applicable, and he's indicated at that point that since we didn't put that as a condition, we can't enforce that.
We enforce the conditions necessarily what they say if it's not a condition.
So unfortunately, even though they said that was their hours of operation and that they would not be using a rear door, they have done so. I just wanted to make that.
We could though if we wanted to put conditions on the use of the video lottery machines, though. I don't know how, that'd be extremely hard to please.
That would be interesting. If, for example, if you limited video lottery machine to ten P.M., they would still have the alcohol permit so they could stay open. I don't know, I don't know how you would get them to actually stop using the machines at that point absent supervision every night, but it would be complicated.
But we could put the condition on that they do not allow customers in the rear yard, video lottery customers.
But the current alcohol condition doesn't have that, so the alcohol consumers could go back there, but not the video lottery consumers.
You can't consume outside of the building anyway.
But the customers, the alcohol customers could go to the back, but not the...
I mean, they have a front door.
I'm trying to say what Patrick was saying. We have a conflict, unfortunately. I just...
Yeah, I mean, the one that we approved two meetings ago is going to have a back door too. It's just not going to be where the customers come and go from.
Well, regardless, both of these types of businesses are typically open late hours. And that's why we have them come for a conditional use for this exact reason. So, I don't see any reason why we couldn't put a condition because this is against residential. That, you know, their hours of operation are outside of most people's, you know, quiet times. And so, I don't see why we could not put a restriction on it just because it's video lottery. It's still a business that has hours that could be disruptive to a residential.
Okay. You can restrict the hours on video lottery all you want, but again, they still have an alcohol one that they can be open until whenever. So, like Patrick says, you can tell them they have to stop using the video lottery machines at ten o'clock. But then their business can still be open until whenever, and who's going to monitor whether or not people are playing machines after ten o'clock?
I wasn't suggesting limiting the hours that they're open. I'm suggesting limiting and restricting their clientele from standing in the backyard and disrupting the neighbors.
That is done with a noise complaint. We have an ordinance in place for that already, so...
One option, since this is kind of a wishy-washy gray area. If you would like an opinion from the city attorney, you can certainly request one from her. That would take probably at least one meeting, just because we couldn't call her up now and get an opinion. But, or if you want to proceed, that's an option.
Any other thoughts up here?
I guess my question, do we know if there has been any complaints made to the police department or anything that has actually gone on here?
I'm not aware of any, but that doesn't mean they haven't happened. I haven't talked to the chief specifically about this.
Do we have rules in place, Patrick, when you get a malt beverage or alcohol license with us when it comes to police calls? And when they come to reapply for that every year?
I think so. I think we have a list of who has been a violator and who hasn't.
Do they have to apply for the license every year?
They get renewed every year if I remember correctly. We renewed them.
I think so.
Would we be able to put a condition on the video lottery now and then put a condition on that?
Oh, no, they don't renew the conditional uses. They just the alcohol license. Yes. Yes, the alcohol license gets reviewed and renewed, I believe, every year. Because we approve them at some point. And normally, when those reviews happen, there's questions about whether or not there's been any problems, any whatever with any of the patrons, so, yes. Any other questions? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion.
Does this go to the city council? Or does it...
Conditional use, no. Any other questions?
I guess I'll make a motion to approve the application with the condition that they do not allow video lottery customers on the rear of the property.
Okay. Is there a second? Motion and second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight, the rezone application for three hundred South Heritage Road. Patrick?
So, this is the rezone application for Van Buskirk Park out in the blocks. So, throughout the past several years since we adopted the institutional district in twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen, somewhere in there, the city has been rezoning its properties to that district from whatever they were, whether it was NRC, R1, heavy industrial, central business. We've been rezoning to that. Currently, we have rezoned Tallgrass Park, City Hall, the golf course, Aspen Park, Sunrise Park, probably a handful of detention ponds. And the school district has voluntarily rezoned its administration building. There's a church on Split Rock that is voluntarily rezoned. So, the institutional district was designed to accommodate the uniqueness of city buildings, churches, and schools. Most districts, residential districts, require you to have one principal land use and a limited number, if any accessory uses, accessory use to a house would be a garage. So, in this case, with Aspen Park, Aspen Park is a park, has a detention pond, there's a baseball field, there's the water treatment plant, there's a swimming pool. So, there are a lot of principal uses and accessory uses depending on how you slice them up with a park. Determining what is fundamental or essential to a park to define it as a principal use is difficult. There are parks with some things and not. What makes a park a park? I know it when I see it, but it's hard to define. So, this is kind of the effort here. The city is rezoning all of its properties. There are no plans to build anything or change anything. It's simply to make it comply with zoning currently. Van Buskirk Park has the picnic structure, bathroom, it has a playground, there's trails, it's a detention pond. There's a number of things that it gets messy when you consider principal and accessory uses. So, this is designed to get us closer to being in compliance. If we expect our residents to comply with the zoning laws, the goal is that the city complies with them as well.
Okay.
We do have public comments from a resident in the form of an email, and I do believe we have residents here as well.
Okay. Anybody here to speak on this? Come on up. If you could push the button, the red light will come on. Give us your name and address for the record.
I'm Charles Witt. I live on West Burton Drive, right by the park there. And that area down there, that will all stay natural through there.
Yeah. It's all detention area anyway, so, yes.
Gay.
Yeah, it's not buildable, if that's your question.
Well, I believe I heard him say something about people could build a garage.
So, an example accessory use for a house is a garage.
Yes.
There, your ability to build things in parks is limited. Most of our parks are parks because they're unsuitable or less suitable for some reason, whether they're a drainage way or in the flood plain, or that's why there's playground equipment that, because water can flow through it generally. The building is one thing. That's the restroom is one that. But generally, there are not a whole lot of buildings there. And there are no buildings planned, other than the ones that are there.
Will that area in there be built on to like more shade structures or picnic tables or anything like that down along through the creek there and trails?
I have not heard any plans for that. Barb's on park board. She indicates no, they haven't discussed that. And as far as I know, Daven hasn't mentioned anything, and he's the park superintendent.
The only thing that would be added there probably in the future would be that shared use path, that bike trail that kind of ends by that little bridge that goes into Eagle Creek Development. That will actually get extended out to the new development, kind of that Risty property or Van Buskirk property that they're going to soon develop.
So, I guess another question is, why was this only sent to just a few people, I believe?
We send out notices to people within the three hundred radius of the application.
Three hundred feet radius.
Three hundred feet radius from the application, which is something that we started doing about, what, a year and a half ago? It's not something that's required by state laws. What we're supposed to do is put a sign in the ground. We just thought it would be convenient to send it. And I mean, we could draw that radius wherever you want. We could send it to a thousand feet or the whole town.
Well, as you just kind of wondered.
Yeah.
Three hundred feet was ninety letters. I wrote them and sent them. It was ninety letters.
Because everybody in the area uses a park, and that's kind of why I was wondering about it.
We picked a number out of the air and decided three hundred was good, but it could be more. I mean, if you want more.
And that's, and that's one of the reasons why we bought our home there.
Yeah.
Is because the park's right there.
Yep.
It's nice. It's got the nature areas written and stuff. And that was one of the big draw.
Yeah.
For us to move there. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Just some clarification. The three hundred feet was chosen because three hundred feet is roughly the distance of one city block. So, the same three hundred feet applies for rezoning and conditional use permits, whether it's a home occupation, it's a rezon for a park, it's a alcohol sales permit. It's the same three hundred feet. Some things are more relevant to some people than others, but three hundred feet was chosen because it's a city block length.
I like my explanation better.
That works too.
Well, that'd be the city would do that. The park department would do that. Yep. Yep. Anybody else have any questions on this one? Hearing none. I don't think she has any other comments. Or he, I'm sorry, he, she, whatever. Okay. Hearing nothing. I would entertain a motion unless you have some other questions.
And this goes to the city council, right, the rezone?
Yes.
Correct.
I move to recommend to the city council to approve the rezone.
Motion and second to approve the rezone on three hundred South Heritage. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine, rezone application for two oh eight West Stone Street. This is essentially exactly the same thing.
Correct. This is Stone Ridge Park.
This is the same thing that we just went through. Does anybody have any, want to say anything about this? Okay.
I move to recommend to the city council to approve the rezone.
Motion and second to rezone two oh eight West Stone Street. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The rezone application for seven twenty-one South McCarty Road. I'm assuming this is also the same thing, yes?
Yes, this is McCarty Park.
This is McCarty Park. Okay. Anybody have anything to say about this? Okay, come on up. If you'd like to, just state your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, I'm Terry Froseth, and I live at six hundred South Split Rock there.
Okay.
Right next to, well, McCarty Park's my backyard in the Monument to the East. I was wondering if there's any chains coming close to me, or I'm just...
Nope.
Got underneath the road, road construction in the future. Anything happening there?
Well, that I don't know. That has nothing to do with rezoning the park, though.
Oh, okay.
Just a quick update for Split Rock. So, the DOT is really, is really who has jurisdiction along that street. They are planning on reconstructing that intersection there in twenty twenty-eight. So, they're working on the design of it now, but they're just in the very early stages of that. So, it could get pushed later. It could be sooner. But twenty twenty-eight is when they want to replace that intersection.
Oh, okay. Everything else would be east or around from where I'm at. So, not really a factor. Okay, thank you.
You bet. Anybody else? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Second.
Motion and second to rezone seven twenty-one South McCarty Road. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number eleven is a discussion item, which I'm pretty sure everybody's here for, which is pollinator gardens. I'm guessing, Tammy, this has something to do with you.
Yes, definitely. So, something kind of fun. City of Sioux Falls has partnered with the Minnehaw County Conservation District, and they put together these little packets for pollinator gardens. They use kind of that native vegetation, so it doesn't take a whole lot of watering. And what they're really doing with it is trying to encourage kind of that water conservation. You know, instead of just having your green grass that you're irrigating and fertilizing and mowing, they're trying to incentivize, like, try to get people to have more of the natives so that they're not, you know, wasting water and spending a whole lot of time on it, and then at the same time being kind of pollinator friendly. So, they give out these packets. They're like fifteen dollars. They have the seeds. They have a little manual on how to plant it and kind of the requirements of it. And then they also give a sign to put out there so that neighbors know that, you know, it's not just a weed patch, it's a pollinator garden. Our Water Conservation Committee is now turning into a conservation committee. So, their main focus is still on water conservation, but kind of branching out and doing more of that recycling type of thing and then doing some more landscaping initiatives as well. And so, we're working on putting together our own program. We're going to try to take it one step further and not just have the pollinator garden, but we'll also have some native grasses. So, people can still mow it if they want to, but it's going to look just a little bit different, or they can leave it long too. I just wanted to get it out in front of you guys so that you know we're going to limit it to a hundred square feet, so kind of a ten by ten area. They still need to meet a five-foot setback from all property lines. So, they can't just go out there and put it along like a chain link fence where it's going to, you know, kind of jump over into their neighbor's lawn. And then they also have to put a border around it. So, we added a little bit of restrictions to it, and then we are going to give ours out for free to the first fifty so that we can kind of manage it and watch it and, you know, see if the seed types work and that sort of thing. So, hopefully, we get it out there kind of next month so people can start seeding it.
So, do you need anything from us besides just awareness?
Nope, just awareness.
Okay. I mean, we already allow kind of for this.
We do, but this is going to be taller as well, so we are not going to meet some of that height ordinance.
Yes, but wouldn't this fall into the zero scaping?
Yes.
Agenda of that, and if I remember correctly, the zero scaping is approved by the city engineer?
Correct.
So, you're welcome.
Yeah, thanks.
There you go.
When you say pollinator, you mean these are plants that would attract bees and butterflies and...
Yes.
Cool.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you. Nice work. All right, item number twelve, townhouse discussions. Patrick?
So, as you know, having been here most of the time except for Megan, she's new. But we have constant contact with developers. They propose things. Some things make sense, some things don't. Some things are gray area in our ordinance. Sometimes we seek an interpretation of the zoning ordinance just because of staff. We want to make sure we are carrying out the directives you give us to do. One thing that has recently come up is a developer is looking to develop a development of what I would consider townhomes, but that is up to interpretation. If you look at the definitions in the zoning code, a single-family attached dwelling is attached to two or more single-family dwellings by common vertical walls. A dwelling townhouse is defined as one or a group of three or more single-family attached dwellings designed and built as a single building. Each individual townhouse may be owned collectively or separately. For the purposes of side yard regulations, the buildings will be treated as if it occupies a single lot. Then if you go to the multifamily definition, it is a building or portion thereof containing three or more dwelling units served by common corridors and entrance. What this developer is proposing, if you want to see a picture, it does have their logo on it, so I'm... hesitant to put it out there, cause I
That's fine.
will clearly say who it is. But it is a row of them, they are single families, two or three stories, probably two, they are individual units with a first floor and then upstairs, it is one unit, you access your unit as a garage, and they are in a row. This developer is proposing to do a hundred and sixty of them.
All tied together?
There'll be nines and twenty-twos, nine, four times. So, four, four times. So, right now, the zoning code says we allow multifamily dwellings nine to thirty-six and single-family attached five to thirty-six as a permitted use. In conditional use, we only allow multifamily dwellings thirty-six or more. There is no language in there for single-family attached thirty-six or more. How should we, is that an oversight, was that intentional? We just wanna make sure we do this right. Right now, my interpretation is our zoning code would not allow what they are proposing to do. Because these seem to be single-family attached.
Is this zoned R two?
It's R three.
It's zoned R three?
Correct, R three, conditional use only allowed, it specifies multifamily dwellings thirty-six or more. There is no language saying single-family attached thirty-six or more.
Could you please repeat the definitions for the two?
Yep, so, single-family attached is
Here we go.
So, this is also on a hundred, page one forty-two of your zoning code.
I can't get it to open up.
Internet's great in here, so. So, single-family attached is a single-family dwelling attached to two or more single-family dwellings by common vertical walls. Dwelling townhouse specifically is defined as one of a group of, or row, one of a group of row of three. Maybe there should be an or in there, but three or more single-family attached dwellings designed and built as a single building. Each individual townhouse may be owned collectively or separately, for the purposes of side yard regulations, it'll be treated as if the building occupies a single lot. The key with multifamily dwellings is that it is a building or portion thereof containing three or more dwelling units served by common corridors and entrance.
Um, would they get around this if they had separate lots? For building? I suppose everything's gonna be a separate lot, though, if they're selling them.
They are, th- these will be leased. There'll be one collective lot and they'll be leasing the units. There will be one water and sewer connection to each of the buildings.
We just did a conditional use for buildings this way because they didn't wanna have to replat all the lots off, correct?
Correct, those, those qualified as the multifamily squarely because there were common corridors and
This seems a lot like that.
access all the units.
To me, this seems a lot like that.
I, I think the, the definition that you're getting hung up on is that for multifamily, they have a common entry, right?
Correct, common corridors and
And so, for single-family
Right.
attached, they don't have a common entry.
Right.
And so, our verbiage doesn't, what is
Our verbiage doesn't allow single-family attached, the same as it does multifamily. I think the intent is, is that we should
And, yeah, I mean, it seems like the same use, would be my guess.
I think we either need to change the definition, or we need to change what's allowed and included, just like we do multi, multi family.
I mean, you could go thirty-six or more, just like we do with R three, I suppose, and, uh, or, or for the, cause we're just talking about an R three zone, correct?
Correct.
I mean, it's already R three, it's not R two.
Correct.
It's just the style of building that they're looking to build, instead of, one style is a different style.
Correct.
Instead of a hallway, it has a bunch of doors in it.
If I remember back twenty eighteen or so, when we were going through all this, there, I, I'm not sure why one is there and one is not, I remember there was some conversation about, so if these are townhouses with external access points, some townhouses have an attached garage, some don't. These ones do, but you would have a, conceptually, a hundred and sixty curbs for driveways. Maybe that's why there was a difference, or maybe it was just simply an oversight, I don't know.
Probably because we hadn't come across one yet.
It could be.
Well, the issue that the difference between those two is you would still be limited to your number of driveways per property. Regardless of whether it's a bunch of townhomes or a multifamily. So, you'd still be limited to your driveway restrictions per parcel. So, if these are all on the same parcel, if you had thirty-six townhomes on one parcel, you would still be limited to the driveway restriction.
So, you're saying they'd still have to work with having some sort of common maneuverability inside to allow access to each one, not from the, directly from the street?
Right.
And, yeah.
Yeah, is the, the person who brought this in thinking that each of these units would have its own yard, that the person who lives there would be responsible for, or would it be more like, say, like the brick apartments and so on?
So, these will be rentals, so you would have some company that owns them all that would take care of the common space. And there would be a, a small yard in the front, probably some degree of a yard in the back for the ones that are just one row, there are some that'll be back to back.
But a lot of the outdoor part would have, would be common space.
All of it would be.
So, yeah. So, so, would it be one parcel? Like, yeah, I wondered about that. I was wondering about that driveway situation also, but if it stays one parcel.
They could have a private drive to access all of the different directions, it just wouldn't be, you know, a public drive.
Yeah.
I think, uh, yeah, I think being an R three, I think kind of the purpose of that zone is to have a different kind of mix of single-family and more allowance for multifamily like this, so, um, and I agree, we maybe just didn't have a concept in mind quite like this when this was passed, so, uh, to me, I don't think, uh, townhome development like this is any less appealing than a apartment building development like this, so I'd be in favor of looking at it.
My question for you all is, do you see these as single-family attached or multifamily? If single-family attached, would you be interested in pursuing an amendment?
You could look at these as multifamily, I think, in my opinion.
Even with the definition requiring common space and and entrance and common corridors? Depending on how you define common corridors.
They, they wouldn't be single-family, though, because they're not individually platted, so it, it's not single-family, it is multifamily. And, I, has this developer built these specific units like this somewhere?
I would assume so.
I believe so in T, T has a far different zoning ordinance than we do. They allow both three and above permitted use in their multifamily, so you can go to town in T.
Yeah, and, that's fine, my question was just because, my hesitation is if, if it hasn't been done, why? Is there something that we're not asking that we should be asking? But I, I can't really see a reason, but I, it's, it's multifamily, so I think we have to figure out the verbiage to put it under multifamily. Change the verbiage that it doesn't have to have its own access in order to be multifamily, cause if it's on one parcel, it's, it's not single-family, it's multifamily, so I think we just have to fix that multifamily verbiage.
Um, a- actually, so he's just looking to see if he can interpret that as a multifamily without changing anything, like, so cause if we don't have to change an ordinance, then we don't have to change an ordinance.
In my mind, I used to just be questioning where I think a multifamily townhomes is a type of multifamily.
I, I would agree with that.
Apartments are a type of multifamily.
Right. The only other thing, I mean, the, the other fix would be to take the R three verbiage, and instead of thirty, thirty-six and up, just like we do with multifamily. I mean, that would be the easiest fix, per se, I mean, we are in the R three zone, and obviously is meant for higher density and higher properties than R two or R one, so whichever way makes you more comfortable.
So, you're saying to, to allow a conditional use process where above thirty-six could be approved, could be considered for this type of property similar to an apartment building, cause it'd still be a conditional use, I think, with a multifamily, right?
Correct.
Yep.
Well, and that's what we did, the last meeting, we did that because they, they proposed what, seven, eight buildings? Whatever it was, however many buildings it was.
Those buildings did have common door, common corridors and a single entrance.
But what I'm saying is that they came for conditional use because they could have replatted those off into individual lots and done the same thing that they wanted to do.
Correct.
Yeah. So, I mean, they could do this with this, too, they could replat this all off into individual lots and do it, or we could make the allowance for the ordinance, or you could
But I think, Patrick, if I'm, I'm not trying to beat this over, but the, the problem you're having is that multifamily requires a common entry, right?
By definition, it seems to.
Yeah.
And it requires common corridors and an entrance.
And if we're saying that townhomes are in essence multifamily, and these would certainly be multifamily, cause they're not individually platted, then the verbiage that requires there to be a common entry doesn't work, so we need to change that verbiage.
We don't want to, cause we still need it for the multifamily.
Well, we have, we also have multifamily in R, just R two, we have multifamily in R two. We, we restrict it to
Yes, to four, correct.
So, you could have
A common entry in hallways and a fourplex.
With a single entry, you could also have four townhomes.
Correct.
So.
Okay.
So, in my mind, we either change the definition of multifamily, or we have townhomes to R one, R two, same way we allow multifamily.
Don't we allow townhomes in R two? Yeah. Yeah.
I can't access it, so I don't
Leave it on.
Single-family attached and multifamily is generally treated the same throughout, until you get to R three and it's differs with conditional use for some reason.
Up to four in R two.
You glad you signed up for this?
Single-family attached up to four in R two is permitted. Then it goes to, there does not appear to be a multifamily heading that is a permitted use. Once you go to conditional use, multifamily up to eight, and then there's single-family attached up to eight.
But we don't include any R two for
if you consider them single-family attached. Permitted.
So, okay, but, so, single-family attached, so why are we running through this issue in R three?
So, single-family attached, so you, you're, you're saying
We are bound by language that may need correcting.
But, but under R two, the, a fourplex that's not individually platted is by definition a multifamily, right?
It, single-family attached is broken down into single-family attached up to four, and then single-family attached dwelling up to four individually platted lots surrounded by common space. So, if it was
But it wouldn't be a single-family attached if it's one parcel, right?
Yes, it is still. We don't define townhome, unfortunately, in our, I don't think we write townhome in our ordinance.
We, we don't, we have a definition, but it's not spelled out specifically.
Single-family attached, single-family attached.
A multifamily has more than one family living on a parcel, right?
Right, but you define multifamily as something with corridors and one entrance.
But if you have more than one family living on one parcel
Yes.
with separate entrances, what's that?
Well, it could be considered multifamily, but we, we define multifamily in our ordinance as being corridors and one common entry.
I think this is the problem that he's having with our ordinance, is that
He wrote the definitions, man.
Under the ordinance.
I'm just saying.
It breaks them down into dwelling, it, it regulates by dwelling unit, and dwelling unit being one or more rooms designed, occupied or intended for occupancy as a separate living quarters with cooking, sleeping, sanitary facilities within the dwelling unit for the exclusive use of the family. So, when it talks about up to four, it's talking about up to four dwelling units.
I really need to see this in writing in my attorney, I can't, I can't
Okay. I think we agree that this should happen, we just think the language needs to allow for it. Would that be fair? And whatever language
We agree with you as well, we're just wanting to make sure we do
Whatever language you need to present to allow it, we should probably see it. Is that fair? Unless you wanna tell him that he can interpret what he's got in front of him as multifamily.
I, I don't think we can do that based on the definition, I think that'd be incorrect.
So, okay. And that being said, then we need the language to allow for it.
Isn't zoning great?
Well, to simple, simplify it, does the multifamily definition need to include the corridor, the common corridor?
I'm gonna let him write some definitions and present them to us. Um, and then we can hash it out once we have them in front of us.
Housing is an ongoing thing, we started talking about a while ago with the Augustana survey and how everywhere is short dwelling units, so we'll be probably spending a lot of time on making sure we're current on housing definitions and
So, I'll be ready for May sixteenth.
I mean, cause we have these in town right now. We have some down by
Oh, yeah.
Metairie School, we have some
Yes.
Steakhouse.
I don't know if we would have more than thirty-six on a lot.
No. No. So, yes. So, right. How's that sound?
Sounds good. And if you have any feedback along the way, feel free to help me get there.
Did you follow half of that?
I think so.
Okay. We didn't bring up setbacks. No.
We did talk about the setbacks with the pollinator garden, just
Oh, yeah, we did, actually.
There was a setback comment, I'm just saying.
We don't say yard, we say setback. Yeah, yards are irrelevant to us. No, we're not going to go into adjoining and abutting. We spent an hour trying to define adjoining and abutting, and where it came into place in the ordinance. Okay. Anything else? Nope. And I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion in a second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries, we are adjourned at seven seventeen.